Good evening, I call to order this meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you very much, would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, our Sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Chris Delong, Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight, may we have the first honoreum, please.
Resolution recognizing David Morgan and his work with the Winston-Salem Street School. Whereas David Morgan began his distinguished career with the Winston-Salem Street School in 2004 as founder and first executive director, and whereas he worked in every possible capacity including director, principal, counselor, teacher, and facilities manager, and whereas David has always been known as a humble leader, compassionate counselor, dedicated manager, and committed administrator to faculty, staff, and students. He is a 1980 recipient of a BA degree from Wake Forest University and received a Master's of Divinity degree from Denver Seminar in 1992, and whereas he helped guide hundreds of disenfranchised youth in their quest for educational and spiritual growth. Additionally, David has bestowed diplomas to over 170 graduates and has given them hope for more productive, bright future, and whereas David has worked tirelessly with selfless dedication to enlarge the school from a single classroom to a fully functioning high school facility, and whereas he has formed partnerships with Forsyth Technical Community College and local agencies to help ensure students realize their potential for success, whereas to facilitate students and friends, David is known as a person of wavering faith and love for Jesus Christ, and whereas David will retire on June 30, 2018 after 15 years of commendable dedication to the Winston-Salem Street School. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby confer upon David Morgan its highest commendation for manner in which he has performed his duties, and with special thanks for his professionalism, dedication to service, and kindness to the faculty, staff, and students and families of the Winston-Salem Street School.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And there's no opposition, that is unanimous, David, would you come forward, please? David, on behalf of the city council and the 245,000 citizens of Winston-Salem, thank you for what you're doing for our city, have done for our city, for those of you, I know many of you have been to the Sixth Street School and seen that, what a great role you're doing there, so many lives you've turned around, I've had the opportunity to be there many times and to see the great work, so the resolution is on its way, and so we'll get that to you, but congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, and I just have a quick, brief word I'd like to address the council and the mayor. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for this honor, I'm humbled to receive, I want to make it clear, to give all credit where credit is due, which is to all of the people which have been involved in making this school a reality for 14 years, many of them here with me tonight, the volunteers, the staff, the board, and donors, all who work so hard in trying to help youth achieve that important goal, to obtain a high school diploma, so I receive this for all of them tonight. I hope and pray the street school will continue to be a light on a hill for our city and provide hope for those desiring another chance to simply finish high school, thereby improving their future and in turn improving Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you David, now we have members of the board there, maybe the members of the board can stand up and let's recognize you, thank you for your leadership as well. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items, we have two rezoning petitions, an item related to the exchange of city-owned property, an item related to the East End Development Agreement, a Trolley Pub Ordinance, an amendment to an installation purchase contract with the North Carolina Municipal Leasing Corporation, and six items related to recommendations for appointments or reappointments to city boards and commissions. The rezoning petition and the item related to the exchange of property are listed for, and the item related to the East End Development Agreement and the Trolley Pub Ordinance are listed as public hearings. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chambers will be given an opportunity to speak, if no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the items. If there is opposition to the rezoning petition, normally we give 15 minutes for the proponents and 15 minutes for the opponents and three minutes for rebuttal. The city council then, after that, will consider the item and vote on it as they consider appropriate. We're televising this meeting live on TV 13 and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM, of course copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our meetings are always available online at www.cityofws.org and just click on the watch meetings online link. May we have the first item, Ms. Johnson?
Item Z1, public hearing on zoning petition of Julie Delane Davis from HB and RS9 to HBS, property located on the east side of Nicholson Road, north of Kernersville Road, located in the east ward, planning board recommends approval of the petition.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, I'll recognize Councilman Montgomery if he's ready for a motion or if he wants to report from his plans there.
I'm ready for a motion with a comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, two, W-3367, and three, the revised site plan.
Second.
Motion second, please go ahead, Councilman Montgomery.
One, I want to say thank you to staff for working with the property owners on getting this, these issues resolved within this, you have a business owner who has succeeded in business and looking to expand their operations and business, and government is supposed to be there to help these processes move forward and not stand it away. I will say that working with and having conversations with Malone, Mr. Malone and others in this process, that I would ask staff to reevaluate how we look at some of our watershed issues, which was something that came up in this conversation, and how we can work better to make sure that the process works on behalf of the citizen as best as possible. Ms. Malone and others were very, very amenable to the recommendations by city staff to make adjustments to the building and the placement of the building, but I think in future cases we can do a better job of making sure that some of the requests by some of those seeking rezoning, that's in the best interest of the community, that we find some type of way to find some variance in that process.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed, please vote That motion passes unanimously, thank you, Councilman Montgomery. Item Z2.
Item Z2, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of Everly Farms LLC from RS9 to RM8S, property located on the northeast corner of Silas Creek Parkway and Ebert Street, located in the southwest ward, planning board recommends approval of petition, this item was continued from the May 7, 2018 meeting of the city council.
Councilmembers, as you know, this item is a continuation, the public hearing is still open, I would like to suggest that since we've heard from both sides extensively that we would allow five minutes of presentation from both sides without objection, sounds okay?
Okay.
And I'm going to ask our city county planning director, Mr. Norby, who by the way, this is his last meeting, planning meeting here, so Paul, to give us your briefing on this, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, members of the public.
Good evening.
You see the property here shown in yellow, it's at the northeast corner of Silas Creek Parkway and Ebert Street, it's in two different tracks, actually three tracks, but the third tract is not included in the rezoning, but tract two, right at the intersection of Silas Creek Parkway and Ebert Street, is proposed for LOS zoning, and tract one, that is in the northern part of the, of the yellow piece of property, is proposed for RM8S. This is an aerial photo of the same area there, you see the property outlined in yellow, and you see the development pattern around there, you see Forsyth Tech over in the lower right-hand part, you've got offices on the other side of Silas Creek Parkway from this track, and then residential surrounding to the west and to the east, and church is located immediately to the north of the property. These are some ground shots, this is looking directly from Silas Creek Parkway into the site there, and then these are shots along Silas Creek Parkway, at the upper left is the apartments that are immediately east of the, of the tract in question, and then the lower left and the, and the right is the office development on the other side of Silas Creek Parkway across the street from the property. This is Ebert Street, which is, the upper left is looking south towards Silas Creek Parkway, and you can see the single-family residential on the right side of the street, that's immediately across from the tract in question, and then the lower right is Ebert Street looking to the north, site is to the right, single-family residential to the left there. This is the proposed site plan, which consists of 32 two-story townhouse units in the northern part of the tract, you can see the street system there, and the, the two units on, adjacent to eight, to Ebert Street are designed so that their front doors are facing Ebert Street, otherwise they are, they are facing the internal street, and then it is connected by driveway into the office part of the tract, you see two buildings there with a parking lot, each, each of those uses have their own access onto Ebert Street. These are the proposed townhome elevations, and this is the elevation of the office, the two-story office building facing Ebert Street, which is 20,000 square feet, and then this is 10,000 square foot office building facing Silas Creek Parkway. The height, the massing, and the architecture of the proposed office buildings are generally compatible with the surrounding development pattern, at least in the staff's opinion, the proposed development comprehensively is designed with coordinated access and good interconnectivity between the two uses, the site will not have access on the Silas Creek Parkway, and there was a traffic impact analysis prepared that recommends no additional street improvements to it. Some traffic and trip generation figures from the staff report, Silas Creek Parkway carries 22,000 average daily trips per day, but it has a 49,000 vehicle capacity. Ebert Street carries 5,000 average daily trips, and it has a 13,800 trip capacity per day. The trip generation, if the RS9 currently on the property remains, calculating at 37 homes, that would be possible 354 trips per day. If it is developed as proposed, the 32 residential units that are proposed in the northern part of the site would generate 186 trips per day, it's estimated, and the total of 30,000 square feet of office space would generate 1,088 for a 1,274 trip per day total. As I said, the traffic impact analysis was done, it was reviewed by the city DOT staff, and no additional roadway improvements were recommended. Some of the conditions that are relevant to this site that are attached, as proposed conditions are, there would be a stormwater study that would have to be done, and then if it recommended a stormwater management plan, that would have to be prepared and approved by the city stormwater staff and then implemented. There is a tree save easement on the adjacent Lot 3, that is the lot that is immediately east of, of this, that's under the control of the developer but not part of the rezoning. There's no access from Silas Creek Parkway, but a requirement to build a bus shelter, buildings would have to be built in conformance with elevations, there would be a lighting restriction, full cutoff light fixtures, 25-foot maximum pole height, and half a foot candle brightness at the property line, and then finally there would be a condition that allows no electronic message board or internally illuminated signage along Ebert Street. This is the adopted Southwest Winston-Salem Area Plan update, you can see the site in question in the middle of this, of this map here, and it's sort of a dark tan color there, and so the specific land use that's proposed for this tract is intermediate density, multifamily, but you can also see it's a little bit hard maybe for the audience here, but there is a growth corridor that is outlined along Silas Creek Parkway, outlined in green, which covers this site, and it covers a lot of other sites immediately to the east, and it recommends a mixture of commercial, office, and multifamily for that. The proposed RM8 portion of the site is consistent with the residential land use recommendations, the proposed LOS portion that's in the southern part of the site is consistent with the growth corridor recommendations that I just went over, but not the specific land use recommendations for the site that were discussed during the area plan process. On April 12, this went to the planning board for public hearing, there were two nearby residents who spoke in favor, there were representatives of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association who spoke against citing concerns about the land use recommendations of the area plan and traffic, but the planning board did recommend approval of this after discussion, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Nor, are there any questions for Mr. Norby at this time? All right, thank you. We do, we'll have a public hearing, five minutes on either side, we'll start with, Mr. Nielsen, do you want to begin, or?
Thanks to Mr. Hagan.
Okay, if you'd again state your name and address for the record, please.
Let me try to get my presentation up here first. So, good evening, councilmembers, mayor, my name is Barrett Hagan, I'm the developer, my current address is 3859 Battleground Avenue, Greensboro, North Carolina. I want to start off and just explain the site plan a little bit further in detail. We've got 32 townhomes on the north side, and the price range expected for those is about $120 per foot, so with current square footage is they would range between $140,000 and $240,000 when they're sold. We don't think the opposition has any issues with the townhome portion of the project. The two office buildings are what buffer Silas Creek from the proposed townhomes, making them possible. All the neighbors that are to the east of the site off of Miller Street, they do not come up against anything other than one side of a townhome building, or open space, or tree save. The, the office component of it does not touch anybody that is living on Miller Street. There is some houses across the street on Ebert, but all of those people have signed in favor of the development, and I'll get to that a little bit later. Wanted to talk a little bit about the elevation, last time we didn't get to this, it was very important to me that we design a building that would fit inside of the residential area of Ardmore that is up to the north, but also functioned as a office space and kind of bridged the gap between the busy areas on Silas Creek. So we've got a pitched residential-style roof, we've got residential-style windows, we've got varying materials to try to break up the building so it doesn't look like a commercial building. I wanted to touch on traffic because that has been a big concern, especially on social media, people have been using it to cite why you should oppose this project, and I want to break it down so that folks can easily understand what our traffic really means. So the office is going to have about 1,084 trips per day, now, that's in and out, so that's 542 unique cars, so I don't think many people have a concern with the trips in because they're free-flowing movement, I think most people are concerned with folks that want to leave the office. So if you take 542 exits over nine hours, that would be a car leaving every 60 seconds. If it occurs over 11 hours, which is 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it's a car every 73 seconds. So just imagine counting a car every 60 or 73 seconds, and I just don't think that anyone's going to notice a traffic impact on Ebert. So this is our outreach map, I went over it the last time, but I'll, I'll go over it briefly here, I sent out letters to everybody in this area, and we've had three different meetings, I've asked folks to give comment, and the green represents folks that are in favor of the development. If you look on Ebert Street, which is right here next to us, all of the folks on Ebert Street, with the exception of one house, which this is a rent house, and I haven't been able to get ahold of the owner, and the renters wanted to defer to him, but everybody else that, that has looked at the site plan and asked questions has signed in favor. We've got 105 parcels here that are signed in favor, but we have many more people that are in favor, I'm just showing the outreach that's just right here. So I'd like now for the people that are supportive of this project to please stand up and be recognized, and if you're standing already, please raise your hand. Thank you so much, thank you so much for coming. I want to make a point that, you know, to get support here, you have to explain a lot of details to them, they do not just come because they hear you're doing a project. I think it's much easier for the opposition to state a few things and generate people to come to a meeting. At the last meeting, there was only seven folks in opposition, and we started outreach way back in December, they've had multiple meetings to come to, ask questions, they had planning board, they had the last council meeting, the ANA was our real opposition, they simply just formed an opinion, and then were surprised when the neighborhood didn't agree, agree with them. Since then, they've been trying to gather support. We started next to our site and worked our way out to get support, the ANA started out and then worked their way toward this project. So this is a map showing the ANA board members and how they relate to this site, and these are the folks that have started on the opposition.
Mr. Hagan, I'm afraid your time is up.
Okay.
You want to say a summary of the thing?
Well, I was just, because these are the folks that started the opposition movement, they're, they're, they're in red there.
All right.
Oops, sorry. Let me do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. For the opposition, Daniel Castro.
Okay, great, Daniel Castro, 2018 Maplewood Avenue, I'm the president of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association, the ANA opposes this development, we believe Ardmore can support additional residential growth, we like to keep this part of the community residential. You know, since last time, you know, there's questions about why does the neighborhood, or how much does the neighborhood actually oppose this development? The ANA surveyed Ardmore residents, it was open to any Ardmore resident, and I've shared a full copy of the survey with council members. We had over 100 Ardmore residents respond to our survey, 83% said they opposed. The reasons for opposing varied, it included traffic, stormwater, crime, safety, environmental concerns, fundamentally, most just wanted to keep this area of Ardmore residential. There's also been other organized neighborhood-led opposition to this project outside the ANA. Some neighbors decided to take it upon themselves to talk to others living near the proposed zoning. They've gathered over 49 hand signatures in opposition, including four who had previously signed Mr. Hagan's petition of support and were represented in green, including some who are here tonight. There was a change.org petition that gathered over 100 signatures, and while there's some overlap between these, in general, we have over 200 members of residents of Ardmore who have indicated their opposition. Finally, I want to say that, you know, many Ardmore residents are, feel frustrated that it seems like the goalpost keeps changing. We participated in the Southwest Area Plan, but we heard last month that some council members were not committed to the plan, and then we contacted our council member, who's been great on this issue, and he, last month, he said he heard overwhelming opposition to the development. Yet it was suggested that if we don't show up in person, our voices aren't going to count, that's why we had contacted him before, and that's why we were at this last meeting. I'll be honest, most of us don't really want to come out downtown on a Monday night and be here, we like talking with you guys, but maybe not on a Monday night, we have families, we have some people who have a hard time getting out here, but we have close to 100 people here tonight in opposition, including in the overflow room, I hope you go down and take a look there, and I hope everyone here tonight who is in opposition, if you can stand or raise your red plate, these are people who live in Ardmore, and I hope when you, when you judge this, we have our IDs here tonight, we can prove where we live. We're, we're very much in opposition, I hear there's over 30 people in the opposition, in the overflow room who are in opposition, and so we, we ask you to please oppose this development, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro, anyone else want to be heard? Yes, yes, two minutes left.
Two minutes. Good evening, Carol Eichmeyer, 500 Magnolia Street, I ask that you please oppose this change. I've lived in Ardmore for 25 years, and I have continually fought encroachment and institutional change because Ardmore is a unique neighborhood, it is one of the very few neighborhoods in the city that still has a variety of housing options. We are an island, and every time a zoning proposal nibbles away at the edges of this residential island, it deteriorates our life. Traffic is an issue because people who live in a neighborhood drive differently than people who drive through a neighborhood to get to a business, and so I would like very much for you to notice that we are here tonight, and also to please oppose this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Perry, I live at 2353 Elizabeth Avenue, I've been an Ardmore resident for over 40 years. I'm here this evening in opposition to the rezoning request for the GOAT Forum on Ebert Road. I strongly oppose commercial development in, of any kind in Ardmore. In fact, I'm surprised to see this issue arise less than two years after my neighbors and I contributed to discussions regarding the Southwest Area Plan of Winston-Salem, which the city council adopted in August of 2016. The 76-page plan recommended this area be kept residential, and it is difficult for me to imagine that conditions have changed so rapidly that suspending the plan is appropriate. I share the concerns of many of my neighbors regarding increased traffic within residential neighborhoods should the rezoning be approved. In closing, if the rezoning is approved and commercial development occurs, it will be too late to reverse the encroachment that will result.
Thank you. Anyone else, got about 25 seconds. Okay?
My name is Inez Davis, I live at 2230 Queen Street in Ardmore. I, I have to agree with the last two speakers, it's, it's not that it's not a beautiful plan, it's the encroachment that occurs, and changing the zoning from residential to commercial or business, it can affect this neighborhood, and this neighborhood is important, not just for us, but for the city, in my opinion, so.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, we will therefore close the public hearing, and I would recognize Councilwoman Bessie, it's his ward, she's, I think we do have a motion on the floor, I believe, to deny this, and a second, city attorney, so I don't think we need another motion, so if you'd like to just go straight into your comments.
I would, and during the discussion, I'd like, if this is not inappropriate, to invite folks from the overflow room to step on over, there's room here that wasn't available before.
I think there are 44 over there, I believe we counted, and on a quick poll, there are four in favor of the rezoning and 40 opposed, if that works for you.
So if my colleagues would please keep that in mind, that more of the supporters got here early, but in the overflow room, it's a four in support to 40 in opposition. Let me summarize. It does not turn down the opportunity for a varied redevelopment of the site, specifically including what the small area plan recommends, which is intermediate-density multifamily. Housing that I submit, as has been pointed out by representatives of the neighborhood, is badly needed in the area. We have no dearth of office opportunities in this area. The residents of the neighborhood who have volunteered their voices on this question are overwhelmingly saying no. The margin is not close. It's something between four to one and five to one in opposition, with more than 100 neighbors speaking up. I did a count, and you have at your seats a hand-drawn, you know, map indicating the level of support and opposition. This is comprehensive of everyone who contacted me as the neighborhood's representative, both the people who responded to an email that I sent out asking for their opinions and people who contacted me either by email or by telephone before and during this past month. The total of individuals who took the time to directly contact me and voice their opinions was 73 in opposition and 19 in support. And if you look at the map, even in the area closest to the site, down at the bottom with the X and circle, there are more people who took the time to contact me in opposition than who contacted me in support. A number of the folks who responded to Mr. Hagan's poll and from whom he received the impression that they were in support of the project have since either indicated to me or to the Ardmore Neighborhood Association that they were either misunderstood as in support when their household was opposed or have changed their mind. Individual names and addresses are available if needed. The neighborhood, in my opinion, as the almost 20-year representative of the neighborhood, has good reasons for opposing this particular rezoning, which includes the commercial structures. According to city staff's own analysis, traffic from this site under the proposed rezoning plan would roughly triple the traffic expected from the site if developed either under the current RS9 zoning or under the intermediate-density multifamily zoning recommended by the By a five-to-one margin, well, actually by more than a five-to-one margin, the traffic coming from the development as proposed would be coming from those two office buildings, not the apartments or townhouses. It is true that if you take the failing F category, that in theory, Ebert Street could support 13,000 cars a day. In fact, there are at least three intersections where you experience delay, and I regularly receive complaints, and that is the Ebert and Silas Creek Parkway, the Ebert and Cherokee, and the Ebert and Hawthorne. Staff has noted that delays would be expected to increase along the Ebert Street car. I think even more important than the specific traffic issue are the two other things that would happen as a result of approving this rezoning. First, it would severely undermine public confidence in the value of the small area planning process and citizen participation in that process. As has been pointed out, this question has come up in the last two iterations of the Small Area Plan, and both times, the recommendation of the citizens, as included in the plan, was to keep this residential and to encourage redevelopment for multifamily. A great many folks from the neighborhood and the area participated in those planning processes. And finally, intrusion of commercial uses in this area will encourage further pressure and potential encroachment on one of our core urban residential neighborhoods, which has historically been under stress from commercial and institutional development on all its delicate edges. 20 years ago, that stress was felt most acutely on the northern edge, the Queen Street to Cloverdale Street area. At one point, the Winston-Salem Journal editorialized, as I recall, that Ardmore as a neighborhood was history, and that it might as well be redeveloped for hospital use. We're seeing that kind of pressure now, here tonight, on the delicate southern edge of the neighborhood. If we don't give the folks on that side of the neighborhood the same kind of respect that we gave the folks on the north side of the neighborhood 20 years ago, we're going to be making a very unfortunate statement, in my view, about the respect we give to good, working, income-accessible parts of our core urban neighborhoods. That's the kind of housing we need to protect and encourage more of, not encroach upon. I urge my colleagues to vote no for the rezoning and to vote yes for the motion, which is to deny this specific rezoning. I will tell you frankly that if the heirs to this property come back and say, all right, we want to market and redevelop the site for residential use, which they have not done to date despite multiple entreaties to do so, I will be more than happy to work with them, and I know the Neighborhood Association will as well.
Just for clarification, since you made the original motion and it was seconded, but then you made a substitute motion to continue, I think for the record, it'd be good if you could restate the original motion, if you have it there, please.
Absolutely. I move for, one, approval of the statement of consistency for denial of this item, and two, denial of W. 3363.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The second, Councilwoman Montgomery. Okay. All right, now to further discussion. Councilwoman Clark.
Got about six or seven points to make, and they're somewhat jumbled and a train of thought here, but I'll try to be quick. First off, I live on Country Club Road. It's a three-lane road. 8,000 cars a day go in front of my house. I know, I understand traffic. Number two, I do hope that after this is over, everybody realizes the sun will come up tomorrow, and I hope there's no ill will between what I think is a great neighborhood and great neighbors. So I hope everybody takes this professionally and can shake hands, no matter what happens here tonight when you leave. So I wish you all the best there. Thirdly, I do think the city council has done as good a job as we can in protecting Ardmore, particularly over by the hospital. We've kind of drawn some boundary lines there. Wake Forest, I mean, Wake Forest Baptist, you know, has actually moved up Miller and Cloverdale. I remember when it was Cloverdale Ford at the top of the hill, and they've actually taken the two office buildings at its top. They've moved the medical school downtown and all, most of the research downtown. So I think Wake Forest understands, and Baptist does, there's no more going into Ardmore. You've got the Ronald McDonald House up there that's kind of a buffer. They have redone or in the process of redoing the buildings there at the, kind of on the hill at Miller, but that was commercial or business to begin with. What we have here, and I have this in three or four places in my ward and other people do as well, is you used to have a small road, now you've got a big road. And how do you go from, and I actually went to the intersection, I mean, Silas Creek's actually six lanes there, counting the turn lanes at Ebert Street. How do you go from six lanes to single-family? I have that problem out Country Club, past Jonestown. It's five lanes. I have houses that still face it. You've got the problem on Robin Hood near Sherwood Plaza. I've got it out Renauld Road. You cannot expect a person to want to live on a six-lane highway. We did it to them. We as a community, we built Silas Creek, or the state did. We widened Country Club. We widened Robin Hood, whoever it may be, and when we did that, we obsoleted it. Nobody is going to want to live apartment or single-family on a six-lane highway, in the front yard, backyard, or whatever. I do believe, and I have supported this in my ward, I think office buildings are a great transition from six lanes to single-family. I also think this will may well take some pressure off Ardmore. I go to a number of doctors up on Maplewood. They're gradually working their way down on Maplewood. I'm not sure if a line has been drawn up there, but they certainly seem to be moving on down. Maybe some of them will come out here. To me, there's no better neighbor than an office building because no one's there from 6 o'clock in the night to 6:00 in the morning. The traffic, as it was said earlier, is a car every minute. As I said, I live on a street that has a lot more traffic than this. But I think the real thing is, I think it is a reasonable compromise, even those that are opposed to, 80% of it's going to be residential, so you're getting 80% of what you want. And as I said, for those that are opposed, I cannot think of a worse thing to do to your neighbors than to stick an apartment unit on Silas Creek Parkway. And I'm not surprised that those that are right there would rather have an office building. Office buildings are quiet. They don't make noise, and this is, they say it's a medical, you might have an insurance agency in there or something, but it's basically people that come and work and go home. I think what the developer has proposed is reasonable. I do not buy the domino effect that if this happens, something else will fall. I think this council has been very adamant. This is a very unique piece of land. I don't know of another piece of land nearby or in the core of the city that's this large other than maybe the children's home and maybe the Whittaker property in Mr. McIntosh's ward that's this big. But I think if you were living beside it, you'd rather have an office building that no one's there for 12 hours a day and it's going to add a car a minute than an apartment, a small apartment complex. And I think it's a very reasonable compromise, and I think it will help stabilize that part of Ardmore, and you're going to be bringing in houses. I did do, he did, the developer did the math from 140 to 240. That sounds like it's comparable to the neighborhood. I haven't bought a house in 30 years in this town, but anyway, I just think it's reasonable. And I think the best thing you can do on a six-lane road is put in an office building, one row of them, to break that six lanes from residential to the residential.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. McIntosh?
I'm going to concur with Mr. Clark. We all have those properties in our ward that face a lot more traffic than when people build single-family properties there. There's a particular piece of property in the northwest ward on Renauld Road and Briar Cliff. The people in the neighborhood behind, it's a very established neighborhood like Ardmore, town and country, they would love to have this development on that piece of property. We've been through several major proposals for other more intense uses, but in conversation with them, we have talked about this is the kind of development they would like to see there. And I agree, I don't think, from my position as a real estate broker who's represented lots of buyers and sellers in Ardmore, I don't believe that this is going to affect values, from my 30-year experience of being in the business. We're sitting up here being asked to sort of take a side on who best represents Ardmore. That's a very difficult thing for us to do. In that situation, I go back to what staff recommends. I believe we have very good staff, and I agree with their conclusions in here. The level of service, even though traffic will increase, the level of service will not change. So there are a bunch of points in here that staff makes that I agree with, and I will be supporting, I will be supporting the development.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Councilwoman Larson, and then Councilwoman Montgomery.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. First of all, this is an amazing level of public participation, and I will agree with my colleague to the right, to the left here, that hopefully we'll all go home and be able to live with each other. My perception of this is that this is the gateway to Ardmore. It's not about Peters, it's not about Silas Creek Parkway as much, although we can argue about whether this is intrusion and whether it creeps down the Silas Creek Parkway eventually connecting over to Haynes Mall Boulevard, which we all know and love. What we've got, then, is a real question about integrity of neighborhood, integrity of gateways and approaches to neighborhoods, and whether or not we're going to protect the neighborhood as a priority when we have, you know, the ability to basically choose whether we're going to have housing or whether we're going to have commercial development. I think this is not the last word, if this is voted down today, on how this goat farm will be developed. I think many of us would just prefer to keep it open space. I mean, we'd love, we've grown up with that. We've seen it for the last 30, 40 years, and the change is going to be hard. But the real question is, you know, ultimately, what is the best thing that we can have here? And I think the planning process has told us consistently that it's residential. That's what the documents have said on every plan that has come out. And although it's been thrown into a mixed-use outline of a larger area, the residential component works within the mixed use. It's just a question of where the residential's going to be. So in this case, it fits within the master plan to hold that as a residential area. I am the newest kid on the block. I've been here for a year and a half, and I've been told fairly consistently that if, when we get into ward discussions, who is the expert in that ward? Who's accountable to the citizenry, the constituents of that ward? Because they're going to vote them in or they're going to vote them out, and it really depends on how they conduct themselves and whether they represent the people in that ward. And as we see tonight, it would seem that our, my colleague, Mr. Bessie, has fairly consistently polled his constituents, has reached out as best he could to see what their desires were, trying to understand exactly what is best for not only the neighborhood, his ward, and perhaps the city as a whole. And I will defer, then, to him, to having done due diligence, as we heard in his report, the various conditions and concerns that were addressed by his report. And I think we can take that and respect that piece of work, which is, I think, significant and commendable.
Thank you. Councilwoman Montgomery?
Actually, Councilwoman Larson picked up on many of the comments that I plan to make, and I'll just echo a couple. One, when we think about residential neighborhoods and communities, we have a responsibility to do everything that we can to protect those neighborhoods and communities. Last month, part of my assessment, when we began to talk about communities, that if a community decides that they want to see that neighborhood differently, then let's figure out how we support that neighborhood deciding what they want to see. It appears to be very clear today that there's an overwhelming majority of individuals in the community who appear to think otherwise. That was one of my very fundamental questions on last month was, how many individuals in this neighborhood really want to see this happen, and how many individuals who are most impacted don't want to see it happen? And echoing the comment very clearly, that the elected process, and it was once stated in terms of who represents the neighborhood, but that's clear, that happens every four years, and that's the city councilperson that is elected to represent that community, to engage with that neighborhood and that community. Then the last thing I'll say, I live on New Walker Town Road. I just checked, 12,000 cars pass by my house every single day, 12,000. I would not want to have more cars passing by in front of my house than the 12,000. That's always already a challenge for me to turn out of my driveway. But I love where I live, and who would want to live there? I would want to live there because I bought the house, so.
There you go. Councilwoman Bessie, you had a follow. Okay, we're good. Any other comments? All right, the motion before us is to deny this rezoning, so a yes vote is a vote in favor of denying the rezoning. So all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, and those opposed, vote no. Okay, one, two, three, four. I can count those. We have a tie vote here, three in favor, three against. The motion certainly is a very difficult issue, certainly great points made on both sides. vote is a vote in favor of denying the rezoning. So, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, and those opposed vote no. Okay, one, two, three, four. I can count those. We have a tie vote here, three in favor, three against the motion. Certainly is a very difficult issue, certainly great points made on both sides, and you always hate to see neighborhoods kind of split with the issues there. This was recommended by the planning staff and by the planning board. After thorough looking at it, I was impressed by the plan, and with the hard work that the developer did on this. However, as Councilmember Larson said, I try to tend to support the representative of the ward who lives there and represents the folks every day, as well as the folks who worked hard on the area plan for its preparation. So, therefore, I vote in favor of the motion to deny it.
Item Z3, public hearing on a resolution authorizing an exchange of property between the city of Winston-Salem and Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem Incorporated pursuant to NCGS 168-271, and acceptance of a gift deed of land from the Conservation Fund located in the north ward, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Yeah, let's hold for just a second, till we have a jet for the room to clear.
Yes, I just want, as folks are leaving, I want to thank everyone who took the time to come out tonight, whether you were in support of or in opposition to this particular proposal. You have participated in the public democratic process, and your voice has been heard, both for and against. We look forward to working with each other in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have further business. If you would please exit the council chamber.
I'm in no hurry. No game tonight, right?
Right. All right, we are on item Z3, which is a public hearing on the resolution relative to exchange of property. Is there anyone in the council chamber that's left that would like to be heard on this proposed exchange of property? Mr. Hubbard is here. If you come forward, Mr. Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard, you'd like to make a comment?
I'm just here to answer questions. Kurt Bor, how do you pronounce Kurt's last name? Borjlin?
Jorlin.
Borjlin had contacted me after the park had been purchased, and we had conversations about opportunities to look at ways to benefit the park there around Long Creek. Thank you.
We know who you are. Would you state your name and address?
I'm Bruce Hubbard. Office address is 1598 Westbrook Plaza Drive, Suite 200, Winston-Salem.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Anyone else like to be heard on this proposed land exchange? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and this is in the north ward. I'd recognize Councilmember Adams, if she would, in favor, or you want to go with the Finance Committee?
Was there a motion that we have to follow? Just can I move for approval?
I'm sorry.
Was there a motion?
Formal motion.
A formal?
No, it's just a standing motion, approve or deny?
I move for approval of Z3.
Motion second. Need further discussion?
Good deal.
If not, those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no. That motion to exchange land is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Item Z4?
Item Z4, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the East End Development Agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and S.G. Atkins Community Development Corporation to acquire commercially-zoned properties for economic development purposes, recommended by the Finance and Community Development Housing and General Government Committees.
This is a public hearing. I see Mr. Davis is here, representing the Atkins CDC. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this proposed amendment to the development plan? All right, seeing now, I know Mr. Davis would be glad to answer any questions. If there are, I will declare the public hearing closed, and recognize Councilmember Montgomery, if he is ready for a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no.
May I add anything?
Yes.
When we first started looking at this particular area some years ago, you, myself, Gail Anderson met, and we also had a few more folks. Carol Davis was there. Gail Anderson made the comment, as she rode into the area where we were meeting, over at the East Winston-Salem Center, at State Floe East. She said, it looked, you could see the difference as you rode in from town into the area where we looked at now. And so, we decided at that particular time, we'd look at two particular areas, Liberty Street and Mountain Park. And so, I said to Attorney Davis, when she got her job and came to talk with me, I said, "Go find the Community Development Department. See what you can hear from them." I said, "But also, make sure you write some proposals with some money in your hand when you come. Don't come with empty hands." And you have done a very good job. That's a very fine area. I know the council must be all the thought in how many people are using it. It's very resourceful, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Do you have a motion to approve this? All those in favor, and that is voted unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. Item Z5?
Item Z5, public hearing and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to a trolley pub of North Carolina LLC for the operation of a trolley pub in the city of Winston-Salem, recommended by the Public Safety Committee.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who would like to be heard on this issuance of a certificate for public convenience and necessity? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll recognize Councilmember Taylor, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
May I, members of the council, I move for approval of this item.
Motion in second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Item Z6?
Item Z6, resolution of the city council of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, approving an amendment to an installment purchase contract with the North Carolina Municipal Leasing Corporation to finance certain facilities and capital assets and related matters.
As the chairman of the Finance Committee?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve this, and the Finance Committee is going to save the citizens $1.1 million over the life of bonds.
Wonderful. Your second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? The Councilmember Montgomery.
Oh, just, I'm glad the chair takes credit for it.
No, I said the whole committee.
The whole committee.
Everybody's going to get a 5% override.
All right, very good. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no.
I may not have hit the motion.
Good idea.
Now I did.
All right, second of Councilmember Montgomery. Now we can vote. All those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Item Z7?
Item Z7, Mayor Jones' recommendations for reappointments to the Winston-Salem Transit Authority. Ruth Carter, reappointment term expiring March 2020. Regina Eleanor Nora Streed, reappointment term expiring March 2021. Jack Fleer, reappointment term expiring March 2021. Robert Garcia, reappointment term expiring March 2020. And Keith A. King, reappointment term expiring March 2021.
So, move.
Your second. Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item Z8?
Item Z8, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointments to the Public Assembly Facilities Commission. Chelsea Cullen, appointment term expiring August 2021. And Ward Miller, appointment term expiring August 2021.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Okay, there we go. Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z9?
Item Z9, Mayor Jones' recommendations for reappointments to the Winston-Salem Zoning Board of Adjustments. Diana Johnson, reappointment term expiring October 2020. Carol Naught, reappointment term expiring October 2020. And Brian Scott, reappointment term expiring October 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Your second. Motion in second.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item Z10?
Item Z10, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Winston-Salem Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion in second, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
We're missing some folks. We're on Z, we're still on Z10.
Z10.
All right, let's go the old-fashioned way. All those in favor of item Z10, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Now, item Z11?
Item Z11, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Utilities Commission. Alan Younger, appointment term expiring June 2023.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Councilmember Montgomery?
I have no concern about this particular appointment, but I do want to lift up, in terms of, out of all of the appointments that we make, particularly, all of them are very, very important. When we place individuals on the Utility Commission, it's even more important, particularly for the decisions that they make in regards to billing, billing cycles, in reference to water and sewer rates that are appointed. Time before, all of us sat around the table, city and county, gave authority to this commission to be able to set those rates, and so, we don't vote on those rates. This commission has the ability to do so, so it's important that those individuals are very thoughtful in that process.
I agree, and that's one reason I was, continued to work hard from the city standpoint, to make sure we have a good diverse number of appointments on our side. The other half's appointed by the county, so we're going to do our side there. Councilmember Bessie?
Good man.
Yeah, he is. Councilmember Bessie and then Councilmember Larson.
I would just speak in support and further endorsement of Mr. Younger's dedication to the community. As you may know, that he is the director of the Small Business Center with Forsyth Tech. It has served our community well, and I believe we'll continue to do so.
Councilmember Larson?
Ditto.
Ditto. Councilmember Burke?
I think that's well what you've said, but you know, earlier on this council, I did question the authority of the Utilities Commission, and to me, I still think that it's a death ear. I do. I still, I still think it is, because of them increasing the utilities, and even though these people are working, we need to see some results. And I think we need to monitor that committee very carefully to make sure that they hear us.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
We're going to get through this yet.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, item Z12?
Item Z12, Mayor Jones' recommendations for appointment to the Historic Resources Commission. Architectural Historian category, Sonny Stewart, appointment term expiring June 2022.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, please vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Without objections, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Burke, yes, ma'am?
Yes. When I ride through town, and I look on the weekends, and I look also in the afternoons, this town is just about as segregated as it was when I first came here in the late 60s. It is said that we have spent all of these dollars making investments, using our tax dollars, in the millennium that we are trying to get the blacks to come down. My understanding, they're still going to Charlotte because of more diversity with the clubs and activities that they enjoy there. Mr. City Manager, I am going to request that we do some type of survey to see how many millennials or minorities are using downtown. In fact, if you want to see it, as one said to me, and more than one, you only see minorities when we have the Black Festival. And then when we do, we have the majorities who do not participate with it. But when you go to Charlotte, you see a diverse group of people coming and going every day of the week, nighttime, enjoying themselves. And that is something I think we need to take more seriously. And also, as far as living downtown, just to view again, what are we doing to encourage folks to live downtown? I believe Mr. Montgomery came up with something.
Right. Anytime the city's involved with a project, we require a certain percentage of the units to be affordable.
And I must say again, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople and City Manager, I think you need to know that we citizens who pay taxes, and we invest our taxes downtown, we would like to see more than what we see as far as that.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Montgomery, and Councilmember Clark?
Yes, and this is just, I'm actually going to ask the city manager to speak if it's in order. I'm referencing, we have started our, and maybe the Finance Chair was going to speak to it, but I just wanted to, a city manager to speak specifically on public opportunity to engage with the budget process.
Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. The Finance Committee has started their review of the budget. The next budget workshop is tomorrow at 4:30 here in City Hall in the committee room. On Thursday, there will be a public hearing here in City Hall in this room at 4:00 p.m. for more input. Next Monday, the Finance Committee will take up the budget, and hopefully adopt, or recommend the budget along with the normal action of the committee. And then the final adoption of the budget comes that following Monday, which is June, what's that, 17th? 18th. June 18th here in this room, and there'll be a public hearing that night as well, at 7:30 for additional input from citizens. And we also encourage citizens, they can call in to 311 to leave their information. They can also go online. There are copies of the budget in all the libraries and the recreation centers.
And in addition to that, as Councilman Eastward, annual, I hold a budget-specific town hall meeting, which will take place on the 7th of June at 6:00 p.m. at the Career Center.
That's right.
Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. Speaker Clark, speaking of the...
Yeah, he took one of my points. The Finance Committee will hold a budget meeting tomorrow at 4:30 in the committee room, which is right down the hall. Other comment I wanted to make, Mr. Montgomery and I attended last week a dinner held by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I just want to say, I thought it was a very good dinner. It was very elegant, very professionally done. It was at the Raleigh Convention Center. It was well-attended. We had the governor, the Attorney General, and the speakers of the House and the Senate, and they were all very good speakers, brief comments. But I'm not sure if it was, I missed somebody?
I was going to say five delegation members.
Yeah, and we had five delegation members there. Some couldn't make it, they were in, the budget was taking place at the same time they were pulling it together. But anyway, I just thought, maybe it's not something we do every year down there, but in the short session, I thought it, for an inaugural year, it went very, very well.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. All right, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you.